It is Tuesday, August 3rd, and it is 6:34 PM. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, read your names. Say you're here. Counselor Bordlon.
Here.
Counselor Baumgartner.
Here.
Counselor Franco.
Present.
Counselor Heed.
I'm here.
Counselor Melendez.
Here.
Counselor Aubrey.
Yeah.
Counselor Parker.
Here.
And Counselor Zupieri.
Here.
Great, you have everyone there. You're all set.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Salute to the flag. We have the pleasure of Superintendent Austin being with us this evening. Would you lead us in the salute, ma'am?
Happy to.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Superintendent Austin. Recognitions, awards, and memorials. I don't believe we have any this evening, and we have no public hearings either. So, we are on to Roman numeral five, which is receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. Just when I've gotten used to just talking about cable, we're back to Zoom. So, receipt of citizens' petition is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. To address the council, we follow the procedure. When you are recognized, please clearly state your name and address and speak clearly for the viewing audience at home. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councils will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during the response to citizens' petition for the meeting. See, okay. And I would just add that before we get started, we value lots of different opinions, but we ask that people refrain from personal attacks, please. That goes for everybody in the meeting tonight. Thank you very much. All right. So first on the list, I have Mr. Nelson Brown. Mr. Brown, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, very much.
Okay. Excuse me. My name is Nelson Brown. I live at 18 Satcham Road in the Noank section of Groton. And I wanted to briefly speak here tonight on behalf of the many, many citizens of Groton who feel that a grave injustice has been done with the placement of boulders to block parking access at one of the last public coastal access points in the village of Noank, which is directly across the street from 66 Riverview Avenue. I'd also like to thank the council for taking up this very important issue for the town residents. I'm sure the town is in the process of doing their due diligence regarding the title and deed history of the property in question, and also completing their own survey of the property, because the survey that was done by the current property owner should no way be taken as gospel. I don't speak here tonight with all the specific dates on title, details, or ownership for 66 Riverview Avenue, but I do know that for the 65 years that I've resided on this planet, the area in question has been an asset the town of Groton has shared with its residents as a place where all general public was invited to enjoy. For as long as I can remember, prior to change in ownership in 2018, the Rathbun family never, to my knowledge, laid any claim to this parking area and, in fact, recognized it as Town of Groton property to be enjoyed by all the town residents. On a typical summer weekend, you will find hardworking people who may have a few hours on a Saturday or Sunday to spend with their family doing a little fishing, or perhaps just setting up a lawn chair to enjoy watching the boats go by. With the arrival of the large boulders about three months ago, much of this activity has unfortunately been curtailed. I have spoken and observed with many of the people who have come for generations to enjoy this special little piece of public land. What did these boulders say to them? Keep out. Go away. You are not wanted here. The very antithesis of what the town of Groton and the Rathbun family stood for for more than six decades is now what these people are faced with when they arrive at this treasured spot. Is incumbent upon the town that town land, local citizens' rights, and the preservation of public coastal access be defended and restored to this small but very much treasured parcel of land. In closing, as we currently are in the middle of the summer season, it would be of great benefit to town residents if these boulders were removed while this issue is deliberated. Those boulders were illegally taken from the river's edge and should be returned to the river until resolution occurs. As a young boy, I fished this very spot with my grandfather, and we always received a friendly greeting from the Rathbuns, all the families that lived in this area. All were welcome. All have been welcome here for generations, and all should be welcomed here for generations to come. Thank you very much for your time, and I again appreciate the council taking this issue up. It's of great importance to a great many people. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Next on the list to speak is Ed McCauser. Attorney McCauser? I just saw him.
Yep.
Hello. You have the floor, sir.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I live at 48 West Aldican Avenue here in Groton. I represent a group called the Mystic Oral School Advocates. And the reason I'm speaking tonight is I want to commend the position the council has taken, which is reflected in the letter of the town attorney in response to a letter from Mr. Ressler's attorney. And the reason that I think this is so important is that Mr. Ressler, under the development agreement, was required to do many things. And rejecting Mr. Ressler's letter, which was basically demanding that the town file a proposed amendment application to zoning, in response, the town attorney made it very clear that Mr. Ressler has not been performing his obligations under the development agreement, enlisted them in great detail, and has demanded and given him notice, Mr. Ressler, that he is now under, you know, a default notice from the town, and he has 30 days to comply with his requirements under the agreement. I think it's my understanding from the development agreement, he may be able to ask for another 30 days, but I think it's important. I was, you know, I know I've made this point, you know, before to the council that that the development agreement required Mr. Ressler to do things. And I think it's very important that now that he's being advised, we're going to hold him to that. I mean, obviously, I represent people that don't want to see this mega-development take place, but I also think it's important that the town, if it can, disentangle themselves from being involved with Mr. Ressler due to his background. I don't think he's, you know, performed under his, you know, the obligations that he agreed to under the development agreement. I know that he, although he was given money to maintain the property, the state has withdrawn his lease for that property because of his failure. I think that if we had known of his background, you know, prior to entering a development agreement and designated him preferred developer, I don't think the town would have done that. But as it is now, we do know who we're dealing with, and I think it's very important that we don't give him any slack, that we hold him to his obligations. And frankly, I think we need to, you know, terminate the development agreement. Some may think that the agreement is moot because the Planning and Zoning Commission have rejected, you know, the amendment that would be necessary to do this agreement, but the development agreement is still in force. There are, you know, possibilities of modifying his proposal. So, I just wanted to commend you for taking this position. I think it's important. It's important to protect the people of the town from possible repercussions of being involved with Mr. Ressler. And I, I think it's, you know, you're showing leadership. The public, I think, it's been pretty apparent is not in favor of this development. And I'm hoping that this is a first step, you know, under your leadership to get us out from under this development agreement and find some better use for the property. So, thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. McCauser. Next on the list is Beth Tillman. And I saw Ms. Tillman here earlier.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilors. I wrote this about six weeks ago, and after the Groton Town Democratic Committee meeting, I found it to be more relevant than ever. I have been reading, I have read Nature Magazine fairly frequently, and they have some very precise and beautifully written articles. One of the ones I ran across was an article addressing the need for diversity in problem-solving, which will obtain better solutions. Don't blind yourself and your teammates to potential solutions that could elude you just because the entire team thinks and approaches problems in the same way. Seek the broadest variety of team members that you can find. The world, i.e. our world of Groton, might depend upon your answers. I think the decisions about the best approach to the Mystic Oral School development were blinded by a desire to increase tax revenues for the town. Although a worthy goal, it is not the end-all and be-all of the town's plan to be a wonderful environment for people in which people can thrive. The state set some of the town to maximize development so as not to have to cover the cost of demolition or remediation of the existing structures. The state has a responsibility to clear the site for new development, new homes. There is no way a developer can make enough money off homes to pay for the demolition or remediation of the site under the current RU-AD zoning, although there were some plans that seemed that they could manage it. The focus now needs to be on lobbying the state for funds to clean up and make the land attractive to more modest developers. There is a group of modest developers who would be happy to focus on this agenda. RU-AD is the zoning. It makes the most sense, as was determined in the Plan of Conservation and Development. Also, in the 2016 Brownfield Grant states that RU-AD plans fit the nature of the site much better than intensive dense development. So, I would suggest, in the future, let's push for a win for the entire town without burdening ourselves with tax rebates, the ever-dangerous TIF financing, and the huge expensive infrastructure upgrades that the development called Mystic River Bluffs would bring to the detriment of the town. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter. And as you might guess, I am vehemently opposed to the current development plan, if there even is one, for the Mystic Oral School. Thank you. Have a pleasant evening.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman. We have Mr. Van Brown next.
Van Brown is here.
You have the floor, sir.
Okay, thank you. My name is Van Brown. I live at 925 River Road, Mystic section of Groton. I'd like to say that I have been caught up in the passion of defending our town. What I also would like to say is how much I have respect, Madam Mayor and Councilors, for what you do. Part of your team, Dr. and Attorney Joseph Perry, has, is the reason I can walk nowadays. I have literally placed my life in his hands several times. Deb Jones, we have dealt with her for more than 20 years, and she has been an incredible public servant, knowledgeable, and competent. All of you have given your time and volunteer efforts in trying to improve Groton. It's my concern that you have been poorly represented. I know Will Rogers said, "Once you find yourself in a hole, it's important to stop digging." I strongly encourage you to not, to keep moving forward with the default. Mr. Ressler, he has been in default since 90 days, more than a year ago, and to try and fight against any extended cure time, as he has, which is focused on things that can be cured but not cured in 30 days. He should have been able to cure this a year ago, and certainly what he is supposed to do in 30 days. I am concerned that not only will the efforts to this point reflect in the ballot box of some of you who are going forward, but I'm also worried that it will go into your private lives. I think this is the appropriate time to have a united front and to join together and show that Ressler's idea of what he wanted to do to our town is not appropriate, and that we are standing against him, not as Mosa and not as the town council, but as a united people. I appreciate your efforts, and I am hoping desperately for your representation of the people in this issue. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and Councilors.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Next, we have Roseanne Katusky. I think Roseanne is, Representative Katusky is here. I thought I saw her earlier.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Roseanne Katusky, 24 Anne Avenue, RTM District 5. Before I get started, I would just like everyone to know that as of late this afternoon, there are, there were 15 letters of opposition to the Mystic Oral School mega-development in the town council agenda packet for tonight, and I encourage everyone to read them. Tonight, I would like to talk about a post that Steve Purdy recently did. Steve Purdy recently posted these comments regarding the Mystic Oral School mega-development, which I agree with and believe they are important for the town council to hear. Our town government is cornered because of its attention to serving not the public but professional and political objectives. Ressler is cornered too. He expected that our officials would act on his behalf, not ours, to obtain zoning changes. So far, they have not acted for him, which they should not have, or for us. They have hidden until Ressler's recent demand for action. Ressler has not produced a plan that includes his zoning needs and has purchased several more area properties, indicating that he expects a floating zone that would free him to do whatever he wishes to our disadvantage. He has the financial resources to produce some sort of plan in the additional 30 days allowed, more than liberal, as he is months late already. With a plan, he, not the town, must request specific zoning changes of the Planning and Zoning Commission to fulfill the plan. Whatever plan he may produce bears very close examination, which our professionals and councilors may not have the expertise to objectively provide. Recently, they have taken a stand that he is in default, which he is. They could have canceled the contract long ago. Ressler may follow his prior MO, sue. That could cost us hundreds of thousands to millions in legal fees and even compensatory damages that should not have, that should have been unnecessary, but now may be inevitable. As Mr. Boyer says in his recent letter to the editor, "We may need the hoped-for objectivity of the courts to come to some conclusion, expensive though it may be. It would be well worth it versus the total broader costs of runaway development. That cost will be paid from the town taxpayers' pockets, all of them, not just neighbors. The onus is on our hired and elected officials. They need to explain and recover the situation or be replaced, though the damage will linger. We need action prior to the election to decide who stays and who goes." Referring now to redevelopment of surplus school properties, one of which a developer will soon be announced. Given the recent track record of our planners, their activities should be publicly scrutinized. At a recent town council meeting, the mayor asked the town manager whether a formal procedure for evaluating development proposals was complete. He replied, "We are working on it." Given the Mystic Oral School fiasco, that's not good enough. No development RFP response, including those now in progress, should be considered without a written procedure. It should include checklists, notes on the positions taken by evaluators, written detailed short and long range comparative financial, economic, social, and logistical analyses, comparisons of bidder responses, et cetera. A moratorium on development approval should be declared until this procedure is complete and approved by the public. The reply may be, "Don't you trust us?" The answer is no. Executive sessions are sometimes justified to prevent disclosing competitive information to other bidders.
You have one minute, Ms. Katusky.
Thank you. But not as a routine practice to exclude the public. There is no reason that full details of the decision process should not be disclosed to the public after a decision is made by a set of published, uniformed evaluation documents. If we have no one on staff capable of creating that, there is someone out there that could. We have a right to know in detail how these decisions are made. Thank you, Steve Purdy, for writing this, and thank you for the opportunity to share it with you.
Thank you. Next, we have Becca Welt, and I believe Ms. Welt is here. Ms. Welt, you have the floor.
Thank you. My name is Becca Welt, 32 Boulder Court. Tonight, I am going to read a letter written by a resident of Mystic with her permission. "To the Town Council and Deborah Jones, I am weighing in on the Ressler mega-development and asking you to find something that will preserve what little tranquility is left of Mystic. My extended family has been here since 1875. My immediate family, parents, brother, have continuously occupied our house across from the Baptist church since 1958. We have seen everything change, but now is the time to stop. Mystic is developed enough. It is overdeveloped, and the quality of life of residents has been greatly degraded. You are responsible to the citizens of this town not to destroy the quality of life. An appropriate scale development of single-family homes is in keeping with the oral school land and with the character to Mystic that you in the chamber sell to the public as quaint and charming. Nobody finds clogged roads quaint and charming. Nobody finds noise and chaos quaint and charming. Oscar Wilde wrote, 'For each man kills the thing he loves.' I don't know if you love Mystic, but we, the residents, do. I don't know where you live and why you have the power to destroy something we love. If you see the town as merely as a resource and not as a home to love, then it's easy for you to destroy our town. Have a heart and a conscience. All of life is not about the bottom line. End this Ressler proposal. Please do the right thing.'" Cynthia Warren. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share this letter with you.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Welt. Next is Eugenia Vellagra. Eugenia Vellagra, there you are. You have the floor?
Ms. Vellagra? Can you hear me?
We can now, yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your patience. Hello, everyone. My name is Eugenia Vellagra, and I live at 76 Riverview Avenue in Groton. Very good evening to you, Mayor Granatoski, members of the town council, town staff, and the public. On behalf of Groton Conservation Advocates, I would like to bring your attention to the trees on the Pleasant Valley School property, now that the town is in negotiations with a potential developer. From the maps on page two of my letter that I sent you all last Friday, you can see that there are many trees on the property. In fact, 52.2% of the town property is covered by trees. It would be so wonderful if those trees could be protected from development and continue to provide more tree coverage on the west side of town where it's badly needed. Most of the trees in the small forest are located outside the fence school perimeter on a hillside rising up to the Navy Development west of the property. There are many tall native varieties of maple and oak growing there, and hickory and black cherry were spotted too. Native grapevines, blackberry, and raspberry are growing near the paved path that connects to school and the Navy housing development. Unfortunately, there is also heavy invasive bittersweet growing up the tree trunks along the path, and invasive barberry and winged eunomys, also known as burning bush, have been spotted and will need removal. There are several full-grown trees inside the fence school perimeter, including white pines, blue spruce, pin oak, and other oak varieties, black cherry, red cedar, hickory, and even the sumac trees there provide food for wildlife. Norway maple trees, which are considered invasive because they outcompete the native trees, are found in the school area too. As you know, there are many excellent reasons for protecting trees. They give us oxygen, store carbon, stabilize the soil, and provide shelter and food to local and transient wildlife. They reduce wind speeds and cool the air as they lose moisture and reflect heat upwards from their leaves. It's estimated that trees can reduce the temperature in an urban area by up to 12.5 degrees Fahrenheit. Trees absorb hundreds of gallons of storm water, which helps prevent flooding and soil erosion. One mature oak can be home to as many as 500 different species. While walking the property, Sue Sutherland and I saw a hawk and osprey and heard many other birds. People are attracted to live and work in green surroundings and benefit from them. Average house prices are 5% to 18% higher when properties are close to mature trees, and people surrounded by trees and green space generally have lower blood pressure, heart rates, and stress levels. If there is a plan to cut Pleasant Valley School trees down and then plant young trees elsewhere in Groton as compensation, as you know, there are good reasons not to. Newly planted trees require many decades to a century before they sequester carbon dioxide in substantial quantities. We hope that the town and the chosen developer will take these facts into serious consideration and opt to redevelop only those areas that are already developed. There are some beautiful trees within the boundaries of the school that could be preserved as well to make the development even more attractive and sustainable. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next up is Robert Welt. Mr. Welt, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Robert Welt, 18 Boulder Court, Mystic. Good evening. First, I would like to thank the town manager for his firm response to Mr. Ressler's recent letter. I hope this leads to the end of any relationship between Groton and Ressler Homes. Secondly, I would like to applaud the effort to the Public Works Department in the resurfacing of Sandy Hollow Road. They've done a wonderful job. I no longer feel the need to have my front-end alignment checked after driving down the road. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Welt. Next is Genevieve Surf. You have the floor.
Can you hear me? I'm just unmuted. Okay. I'm going to bring attention to the, a couple of, an article that was written in London Day recently, and one of the comments. The article is written by David Collins. Oh, I forgot to give my address. Genevieve Surf, 6 Pearl Street, Mystic. So, this article was written by David Collins, and if anyone in the viewing public has not read it, you should go read it, because it is really quite heartbreaking to me. The title is Broken Gun. The title is "Broken Government: Groton Democrats Preside Over a Broken Government." And I'm just going to read the first few paragraphs, nothing personal. "I have continued to be astounded by the behavior of Groton officials, both elected politicians and town staff members, as the debacle of trying to give away a prominent property in town to someone with a criminal history of bribing New York City officials and a spotty record of development in Connecticut, where one of its three principal projects remains unfinished after 11 years, continues to unfold. You would think, as unsettling as it may be, that both the town and the state made elaborate deals to give Jeffrey Restler, the former Mystic Oral School and its 40 acres, and help him overdevelop it, that the freshly revealed truth about his criminal history and development failings would at least trigger some soul-searching. But no, instead, it's been denial, finger-pointing of the attempted laying of blame on others. And it's not clear to me how the state and town are going back-to-back out of the signed deals in which the state has agreed to sell Restler the property for $1, and the town has promised to help him at every stage of carrying out the overwrought and massive development he has proposed." Then he goes on to say, "The only glimmer of good government was the town's volunteer planning and zoning commission that refused to alter the zoning laws to accommodate him." Then I just would like to read the comment by Jim Streeter. Jim Streeter is our town historian, and he was also a town councillor, and he, I think he was the mayor of the council for a while. So what he commented, he put under this article, he said, "Enough is enough. Although I respect all the time, effort, and consideration given to the Mystic Oral School project by elected officials and Groton town staff, I believe sufficient information has come to light to certainly warrant that our elected officials, both local and state..." And he put, "And please leave off the Ds and Rs. In other words, it's not a partisan issue." "...that our elected official back out of what appears to have the makings of a major economic disaster and embarrassment to Groton and the state. No, it will not be an easy task, but that's why we pay our attorneys the big bucks for it. Put common sense before pride. Admit that a huge mistake has been made and move on. Whatever decision the town and state make, litigation will continue for many years to come. So let's cut our losses and run." Okay, I won't read the last part, but basically, it's talking about everyone should stop playing the blame game and asking for resignations. That won't fix the problem. Local officials and staff need to bite the bullet and do what they were elected and hired for, doing what is best for Groton. Get this project off Groton's plate." So these are two substantial people who are calling for our town officials, and I'm afraid that's you, town councillors, you know, to do something about this. Now, the letter from the attorney, we've all seen that, and the response back from Restler, but what would reassure me that you are actually going to take this? Okay, what would reassure me would be to see you, town councillors, assume some responsibility for the fact that this was not a really, you know, fully cooked or a good idea, period, from all kinds of perspectives. I mean, we have lists now in Mystic Oral School Advocates. We have lists of three pages long of all the things that are wrong with this project. And the fact that none of you, except for Councillor Bordelon, has said anything to reassure us in any way. In fact, some of you have dug in even further. You know, Councillor O'Bree, Councillor Berry, Councillor Franco, appear to me to be still totally dug in to the fact that this is a good project. It's not a good project. Please reassure us in the public, the voting public, the taxpaying public, that you are starting to see the light and that you're going to do your best to try to sort our way out of this, what was, what is really not a good deal for Groton. I would really appreciate, and I think the rest, the taxpayers and voters would also appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Scott Westervelt. Mr. Westervelt, you have the floor, sir. Mr. Westervelt?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Thank you. You have the floor, sir.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Madam Mayor, town councillors, thank you very much for having me. My name is Scott Westervelt. I am, I live at 7 Boulder Court in Mystic, Connecticut. I'm calling, or, excuse me, I'm talking to you today about a Freedom of Information Act request that I made that I do not believe was properly answered. And so I'm just going to throw it out there. And part of this goes towards the request for proposals and how they need to be better managed. And Mr. Burt should be able to go back and give me the answers that I'd like. If I need to fill out another FOIA, I will. Okay, I'm going to first read my request, and I'm going to read the response, and then I'll give you what I find wrong with part of this. So, "Good afternoon, Mr. Burt. With regards to RFP 18-25 Mystic Education Center, I respectfully request that the following documents be provided. If my format is not correct for this request, please let me know so that I may correct it for the record. Evaluation criteria and score sheet for each proposal as defined by item 16 of the RFP. Checklist of documents required for compliance for each proposal to include noncollusion affidavit, anti-kickback acknowledgement, proposal transmittal sheet, and listing of officer sheet. Attendees list for official opening of the proposals and a list of selection committee members, including names and titles." The response came from Mr. Burt, but it was penned by John Reiner. Their response was, "The following documents and answers below are in response to your recent FOIA request. Evaluation criteria and score sheet for each proposal as defined by item 16 of the RFP see attached." I have those, I have those sheets. Response number one, evaluation criteria score sheets are provided for each of the submitted proposals. Each evaluator's scores were tabulated from the first round of proposal reviews. This occurred prior to interviews. A second round of evaluations were completed after all interviews were conducted. Final scoring indicated the recommended preferred developer. Question number two, checklist of documents required for compliance for each proposal to include noncollusion affidavit and those other items. The response was, "There is no checklist for the items referenced, but all of the Mystic Education Center proposals satisfactorily provided completed forms. Joint sheets are used by the committee with standard, with stated review criteria, including compliance with RFP submission requirements. Attendees for official opening. The proposals were opened by the town of Groton Purchasing Division, and that was handled by Eileen Cardillo, purchasing agent. Also present was Paige Brock and Susan Cullen." List of these, fourth question, list of selection committee members, including names and titles. There was a review committee consisting of local and state officials as follows. We have Paige Brock, I'm not going to read off who everybody is, but I'll just read the names. Paige Brock, Susan Cullen, Deb Jones, Mark Berry, Leanne O'Bree, Conrad Heath, Graham Stevens, Shane Mallory, Paul Hinch, and Maya Lowenberg. But, okay, that was the response. Now, my concern is that there were 10 people on the selection committee. There were two sets of interviews. The first interview, or the first set of interviews, my understanding is, all 10 members were there. The second set of interviewers was only a panel of seven. And so what concerns me is, of the 10, which three were deleted from the second? And I'd kind of like to know why. Also, who made up the, you know, selection committee for the second? I've been told by participants who...
Excuse me, you have one minute, sir.
Okay. I've been told by participants in the interviews that submitted RFPs that when they went into the second interview, the faces had changed. There were different people at the second interview than were at the first interview. Now we've gone from 10 to 7, and the pendulum has swung, was in favor of the Groton Housing Authority. At the end of the second set of interviews, it swung in Restler's favor. However, if there were different people on the second interview than on the first interview, then those people did not have the benefit of seeing the full proposal and the full presentation given by everybody. So I have a problem with basically cutting certain people out, putting new people in, and now the pendulum swings. That's where my question is. Who was in the second interview? What were their positions? And how did that affect the outcome of this? Because it just, it doesn't seem right to me. I've done these before. I'm also concerned that none of the criteria, excuse me, none of the evaluators were identified on their score sheets. Anytime I've done this, and I've done a number of them, I've got a list who I am, what my evaluation criteria, or, excuse me, what my responses were, and I sign my score sheet. Why we don't know who signed what, that just doesn't seem proper to me.
Mr. Westervelt, your time is up, sir.
Those need, once I, they need to be taken up by Mr. Burt when he's reviewing how he's going to run proposals from this point forward. Thank you very much. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much to the DPW. You guys did a great job on Sandy Hollow.
If you have your written comments, or you're welcome to email them if there was much more that you wish to say, okay? Thank you. All right, and that is all that I have on the list of people that signed up to speak this evening. So we are on to Roman numeral six, responses to citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. And let's see. Okay, we've got Councillor Franco, Councillor Bordelon. I just see two so far. All right, let me change the timer. Councillor Franco, you have the floor.
Thank you. When it comes to contractual issues, I hear what you're saying. I definitely can hear you, and I am listening. Though, because of contractual issues, I'm not, we're not at liberty to discuss at this time publicly. So I apologize that I cannot respond to some of these, but I absolutely hear what you're saying. Thank you.
Councillor Bordelon, and then Heath.
Thank you. I just want to thank everyone for coming out and speaking. I hear the concerns. Definitely interested to talk more about the trees at the proposed developed school of Pleasant Valley. I think those are some great points to be looked at. And in response to, you know, the process of how it came to be, I think it is important, and it has been asked here, you know, at times of, you know, I personally think, you know, all councillors should have the chance to be part of the vetting process, so. And I have asked about the vetting process and background check and paper. Town manager, are we going to be putting that on the agenda as a discussion item?
We will be, yes.
Okay, because I think that would be the appropriate time to talk about that as far as the scoring sheet, and I'd love for Scott to send that, those, that information forward so we can look at that, because I do think, you know, a background check should be part of that vetting process, as I stated before. In response to the, why it went to 10 to 7, I don't know, John, do you want me to email you? Or do you, can you answer anything to help clarify that for them?
I will have to ask Mr. Reiner, since I was not involved in that process.
Because that would be good to know, because not all councillors are part of that process either. So unfortunately, we're kind of left in the dark in the endgame. We just see the proposal, proposed developer. So I think that would be important to have and be discussed if there is a concern present. And one other question for clarification. I know Beth Tillman had spoke about, you know, pulling out completely. How would that look if we pull out as far as our TIF money? John, do you have any answers on that? Do we still have to provide TIF at this point, or what would that look like?
First of all, if there was no project, there would be nothing involving TIF. If the agreement actually ended, there'd be, part of that is to discuss TIF with them. Nothing ever required us to provide TIF. It was a discussion point.
And then just one more thing for my notes. I know we sent that default, but how long have they been in default of the contract?
Well, we sent it like on the, it was around the 22nd of July, but I can't say for sure. It was sent cert by mail, so it might be a day or two after that, so the 30 days cuts off.
And how long have they been in default before we sent the letter?
Well, they're not in default until we claim they're in default, so they're really not.
Well, they, I mean, so we're claiming, but how?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, those would be other great things to bring forward, so thank you. Is that what you're going to say? My time is up, Madam Mayor Granatowski?
No, what I said was you had one minute left.
Oh, thank you. All right, then I will continue. I think it'd be important to have all that information brought forward as to exactly when the breakdown started and at what day and time they were defaulting. And then, because I feel like our release letter was way late in the game, is what I'm saying.
I will have to say, though, we, that would be an executive session item.
Are you gonna, can I finish my one minute, or am I being stopped, or?
You have 20 seconds left?
All right, because, John, if you want to answer, you can go, or I just, we both can't talk. Is John going, or am I going? I just want to make sure I'm not being rude.
But...
Sure. No, I just think it would be important to have that in our full discussion, and I think looking at how we vet developers is definitely an agenda item that needs to come before the council, and we need to figure out a way in our process. It seems as if our process is broken. Thank you.
Just to mention, so the council understands, anything that would discuss the Restler contract would be an executive session, not an open session.
Councillor Heath, you have the floor.
Sorry, I have to find the mute button again, or unmute button. Yeah, I think, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and speaking. Obviously, you know, we've been advised by our attorney that we shouldn't comment negatively, at least not publicly, about the developer, because there could be significant legal liability. But I do appreciate all of you coming out and speaking to us and keep sending your recommendations, making your statements. You know, we need to hear that. And I just want to go back and remind everyone, you know, where this all started. I don't know if you remember, but six years ago, Pfizer bulldozed a building in Groton costing us like $2 million, and tax revenue was more than $2 million. That's $2 million per year that forced a tax increase, and we had a lot of vacant school properties. And, you know, you would see on social media, like Facebook, that people were calling these properties flight, and they were urging us to get them developed and back on the tax rolls. A lot of people were telling us, "Don't build single-family homes. Go for condensed housing. You know, that helps fight suburban sprawl and reduces reliance on automobiles." And EB at the same time was telling us they needed a lot of apartment buildings. So that's kind of where all this came from, from a local level. You know, obviously, things have changed a bit. But meanwhile, the state was dealing with how to fund, I think there was a $40 billion shortfall in their pension liabilities. So Ms. Tillman, for example, she hit the head, she hit the nail on the head when she said what the state wanted to was find a buyer who would relieve the state from responsibility to tear down or abate properties. So that's kind of what we were going for, was to solve all these problems and get that property back on the tax rolls. But we went through a process, and I want to address one question that came up. There were two meetings during the evaluation.
You have one minute?
Thank you. There were two meetings during the evaluation. I don't remember people not coming to the second meeting, but it could be that they weren't able to attend. If anybody wasn't there, it was probably one of the state officials who wasn't able to get down to Groton for a meeting. I don't think that there was anything, like, not above board. I think everyone, the town staff in particular, has been very above board, very, you know, responsible and respectful. And I believe, given how this whole situation has rolled out, that a lot of things are being changed behind the scenes, sort of with town policy. And I know I've had multiple conversations with John Burt to see how we can do things better going forward. So I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and paying attention to this prize, this proposal, and sale. And let's see if we can get through this and make Groton a better place for all of us. All right, thank you.
Perfect timing. All right, thank you. Just very briefly, thank you to everyone who kind of came out this night, who phoned in to share your thoughts with us. And we do appreciate you sharing your thoughts with us. It helps us to move forward. All right, we are on to Roman numeral seven, consent calendar. Councillor Baumgartner, would you move the consent calendar, please, sir?
Yes, I'll make a motion to move the consent calendar consisting of items, various appointments and reappointments for June, the July 6, 2021 town council minutes, and special trust funds for July. Now, Madam Mayor, would you like me to read those names, or?
Let's get the motion on the floor first, please.
Removed.
I will second. Thank you, Councillor Baumgartner. And we have special trust funds for... And we have special trust funds for July. And please don't read amounts, but if you want to just briefly go through the names, I'm sure Counselors of Perry would appreciate that.
Yes, so, Robert Ashworth, Anonymous, Gerard Motors, and Chelsea Grotonby.
And do you want to get the ones on page eighteen as well, sir? The food locker donations?
Yes, a big thank you again to Rosaline Catherine Rathbun, Lydia Steele, Andrew, Richard and Cheryl Dixon, Stop and Shop, Nancy Bernhardt, I'm sorry, Nancy Barnhart, Diane and Dennis Seans, Vincent and Carol Spunar, Nancy Barnhart, Shaquila, and Wutzafar, Merza.
Thank you. All right, seeing no discussion, we will vote on the consent calendar. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. One second, please. Counselor Melendez. Hold on one minute, please. I'm trying to move him, Mr. Burt. Can you see if you can, there we go, it looks like you got him. So it was eight then on the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, because Counselor Melendez had, the call had dropped, it looks like. So the consent calendar was eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions, and Counselor Melendez is back with us.
Right, he was just, he was just not voting, that's all we put up in this.
Thank you. All right, so we are on to communications and reports, and we have town counselors first. And if we could just go as if we were sitting at the table. Counselor Baumgartner.
Thank you. Today I attended the signing of our, the signing of the sister city agreement with our neighbors, the city of Groton and the city of New London. We signed our sister, sister city relationship with the city of Kingston, Jamaica. It's very exciting to welcome the mayor of Kingston, as well as his team and the council general of Jamaica as well. As many may know who follow our council work, this has been a, this has been an ongoing process for the last couple of years. Two years ago, we welcomed the delegation to both Groton and New London. Since then, the conversations were put on pause, obviously, with the pandemic, but it was really exciting to welcome them today in the Mystic Museum of Art and look forward to exchanging, continuing to develop our relationship on cultural exchanges and in potentially trade. So again, thank you to all involved, especially our manager, who has helped coordinate behind the scenes on it. And look forward again to maybe paying a visit to them sometime, since they've graced us with their presence the last couple of years. But thanks to all involved, and nothing further. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Parker, communications.
Nothing to report, thank you.
Counselor Franco, communications.
Report, thank you.
Counselor Heath, communications.
No report, thank you.
Counselor O'Gree.
No report, thank you.
Counselor Bordelon.
Thank you. I just want to second what Counselor Baumgard, Baumgartner had stated. It was a pleasure to be there for the second time, welcoming Kingston, Jamaica. It's exciting. It's, it's nice to have something to do as a team with our neighboring community, with New London, as well as the city of Groton. This is their second visit, as Counselor Baumgartner has stated. It was such a nice visit the last time that I wanted to attend again, when they came and visited on the New London side and then did their tour. I think it's a great opportunity for Groton. I look forward to looking at ways that we can fold this into our, our school system, our community, and look at some, you know, partnerships with maybe possibly even some pen pals, imagine that, some writing, actual real writing, pen and paper, and ways that we can kind of facilitate that welcoming feeling of Kingston, Jamaica. And so I look forward and see where this will go down the road. And I also, after that, stopped at Poquonic Plains, where they were having the night out, and got to stay for a very short time because of dinner in this meeting, but it was nice to see the turnout out there. It looks like folks were having lots of fun and people were around. Thank you.
Counselor Melendez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I, I too attended the sister city signing, and I'm excited for what, what that will bring between our municipalities here and Kingston, Jamaica. I also briefly attended National Night Out. I sat at our, the RDI Collaborative had, had a booth. So I briefly walked around all the other booths as well. So it, it looks, it's still going on now, but it looks like it was, it was a great success. I also walked into the, paid a visit to the town clerk's office today, and the town clerk was gracious enough to give me a tour of everything that her office does. And it definitely, it definitely seems like a lot of work for, for them to, to have. So that's, that's what I did this week. Also, I would just like to bring to the attention of the superintendent, really quickly, CFG has a $25,000 grant that they are, they can, they want to write for, but they would need some collaboration from ground public schools. So I'll send you an email. It, it's time sense, it's time sensitive. It has to be written by the fifteenth. So I'll send that over to you. I just learned about it today, and then hopefully we can work something out. Thank you.
Thank you. That's wonderful. We like to collaborate. They take care of all those little ones before they get to school and even in school, so we're happy to do it.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Counselors of Perry, communication. Thank you. I would like to thank town staff, Mr. Burt, and everybody else who made the sister cities agreement happen and the visit happen, and the Mystic Museum of Art for being very gracious hosts to us today. It was, it was very nice to meet with people from Kingston and the council general. And they are very excited about working with Groton culturally and potentially for economic development as well. So they're very gracious and very happy to be here and to be sisters with everybody in the town of Groton, so thank you very much. I also just want to mention that I was able to attend the christening of the SSN 795 hymen rickover, named for the father of the nuclear navy. And thank you to everybody in the yard, all the people at the offices that do the drafting and the checking and the crew, our federal delegation, Two Sub Joe, Senator Blumenthal, everybody came out for the christening of the rickover, and it was wonderful. And it was just such a nice symbol, something nice and positive to have happening in the town, indicating that we are still moving forward. They've done great work during the height of the pandemic. They were able to keep moving forward and to get that ship built. And it's, it's a, it's a testament to the, the work culture, work ethic that we have here in Groton. So thank you to everybody, and congratulations to everybody that was involved with the rickover. All right, Clerk of the Representative Town Meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The representative town meeting will have a, well, the finance committee, anyway, will be meeting on the ninth to discuss the Wolf Brook Waters property, as it's known, in that purchase. And that will, their recommendation will be handled with the regular RTM on the 11th of August, and any other items that they maybe come before them, before, before that time. That's about it for the, oh, they were going to meet by, via Zoom also, as we're not, we're not able to meet in person at this time.
That's what I just wanted you, for the, for the public, I know there were people interested in the finance committee meeting for the RTM. If you could just state again, it's the ninth?
Yes, it's the ninth of August. It'll be a Zoom meeting. It starts at 6:30, so stay tuned and let us know if you want to attend.
They should contact you, Madam Clerk, in the clerk's office?
They can contact me or, or the town manager's office. We both have access to each other.
Thank you so much. Clerk of the Council.
The town council, you, you should have received a thank you letter that was received today by Safe Futures. They were very happy to receive the $9,600 that the RTM approved on recommendation by the council at the last budget session. So that you should have in your hands, or in your email, anyway, I should say. Also, to follow up on, on what we're doing in the town clerk's office, as you know, we're, we're ironing out the last bits for electronic recording. This is something I've been working on for several years, to get it correct for our town. It will make, I can't say everybody will use it, because most people, I tell you, most people today still like the hands-on, except recording, physical paper transferring to another office. So, but there, I expect that 20% of our recordings, you know, things that are across country, will be electronic. And that's a safe mechanism and varying vital records. Now, this is not just for people that are across country. This is also for anyone in town who wants to use a credit card. We, we're ham-tied still about using credit cards at our office. And so this, this hurtles right over it, and so we can use, it's called per medium, and per medium will allow someone to say, okay, I'm going to go pick that, I'll pick that up at two o'clock, and ta-da, there it is. So it's, it's going to be really an innovative way of handling some of our work. It'll still be work, but it's just a better, and it's a better way for, for the public. And that's what we're all about, anyway, is making things easier for the public. Let's see, that's, that's really enough for you to digest. But it was really nice to have Counselor Melendez. You know, if anybody wants to spend a week in our office, they can really get a good handle of how things work in a, in an efficient town clerk's office.
I enjoyed poring through those old records. Big old books in the vault. That was a lot of fun. Counselor Bordelon, do you have a question for the clerk?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I just wanted to check to see, as we may know, I petitioned, well, I put in paperwork to have a primary, and I'm curious, some questions that have come up from constituents in the town, if and when that, those signatures are fulfilled, and there is a primary on September 14th. What would that look like regarding Mary Morrison, S.B. Butler, and Westside Middle School as far as polling locations? I know if you don't have any answers now, some were concerned that there would not be seven polling stations open, so I just wanted.
As far as I know, I think I would have known by now, but as far as I know, the registrar decides, the registrar voters, that's Kristen Vendetti and Jeannie Rogers, it's up to them to decide, and they have a limited time to make that decision if they're going to change. And there has to be a very good reason not to use a, a regular polling place. So, you know, this is, this, you don't want to disenfranchise anyone. So as far as I'm, I understand, all, all seven polling places will be open. Something I did read today, and I'll, and I'll send out information to, to the political party, is that the political parties can name election workers, including the moderator of the, of the polling place. And I, having never, never had the occasion to, to, to run a primary, that was interesting to see today. So I'll further, get further information and send that on to the political parties. But the August 11th is the deadline to get everything sealed and deal. And then I have to make ballots. Toot-sweet. It's forthwith, is the words they always use, forthwith. Okay.
For the, for the public, I've already been in contact with Registrar Vendetti and Registrar Rogers, and they have in place their thoughts as to what they will do once it is determined that there definitely will be a primary. And we've made arrangements that they will come before the council to talk to you about it as well. So we're going to make sure that it's public as soon as we know for sure that there's a primary.
Perfect.
Thank you. Counselor Franco, do you have a question for the clerk?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to clarify, how much is an election, the cost of an election right now, with all the staffing and everything else involved?
Well, it depends on the size of the election, of course. We are quite required to have certain things. We will not have to have the election day registration polling place, so that's one savings. We don't do that for primary. So the, so you'll have to have at least three people per polling place. That's my understanding. So you have to have a moderator and two poll workers. So, and then there can be volunteers also. There's no, nothing says that you have to pay these people. They just have to be trained.
And the cost of our?
I don't have a cost breakdown. It depends on the size, you know, what's actually needed. As I stated already, that, you know, workers can be volunteers. They just have to be trained. So, and I want to go to, primaries are different than regular elections. There are different rules that, that govern primary. So, and I'm not as familiar with primary, but I can, and it's also not my, I'm not supposed to be talking about what the registrars are doing. They, they have to do that. So I, I designed the ballots. I ordered the ballots and election material. But, so depending on how many votes we expect to get, that's how many ballots we'll, we'll do. Probably 200 ballots per district, just what district, you know, doesn't matter. They're all the same.
All right, because people are concerned of the cost of this.
Right. One of the big costs is $175 per voter card for the machines. So if, you know, if you are having four machines in one place, that's four different charges. Now, we're not doing that. It's just a small election, so it, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be terribly costly. But I agree with the concern, and boy, my opinion is, I don't know why the town has to pay for party politics, but we do.
Right. I just recall back when we were discussing whether we were going to have voting on budget and that possibilities, and what had come to the council. Was that a typical election, even a primary, or to vote on a, you know, your budgets would cost about 28,000 or 20,000, between 20 and 28,000 per election.
You know, again, that's not really, that's the registrar's forte, not mine. I just, I know what ballots cost, so. And I know what the cards, you know, that go into the machines, I have to purchase those too, so.
Right. We are on to town manager. Do you have any communication, sir?
Good evening. I do want to reiterate my appreciation for the Mystic Arts Center for hosting. They did so at last minute, and were extremely helpful with putting that on. Also to mention, there's a long-term recovery committee meeting tomorrow at 5:30, which will also be via Zoom. You can go through my office or the clerks to, to get that information, if you want to join in. COVID-19, just to mention that we are now requiring all visitors and employees in county, in town facilities to wear their masks, whether vaccinated or not. So I, we've been trying to get that word out. No issues so far. Seems like people were expecting that. Downtown Mystic entrance, where you're on Route One going into downtown, you know where the Jersey barriers are. They're finally progressing with that. They've signed a contract to do that repair work, and I believe that work's going to happen this fall. So a long time coming. I've been surprised how many calls I've had. Of course, that, those Jersey barriers went up before I got here, and I've had many calls over the years. Working on, staff is working on a plan for the former Fitch Middle School, as requested by the council. Yesterday, Greg Hanover and I took Judge Keppel and Judge Lehman through some potential space for probate there. There's actually a really well, good, well-suited area for them, potentially, so we're working away at that. Met with Seat last week, me and planning staff, to discuss potential Mystic bus routes, that type of thing. We're going to put together a couple of plans and run it by Seat to put some cost to it, just so we know what we're dealing with. Knowing Gardens, the, knowing zoning commission did waive a requirement for a site plan for planting trees, so that is a go. Anything further, though, will require a site plan. Knowing Riverview, parking issue, which. Knowing Riverview, parking issue, which was brought up earlier. The attorney for the property owners, their attorney has contacted our attorney, but nothing further to report at this time. We did have a catastrophic failure of the chiller unit at the police station, so all air conditioning was lost. And actually, luckily, it's under warranty, but it's about sixty-eight weeks to get a replacement unit because it has to be built by train. In the meantime, we've rented a trailer-mounted chiller that came in last Friday and was hooked up to help there because it was pretty hot in that building. So, and we expect insurance to cover that cost. And that is all I have. Oh, just to mention too, I think you probably had an email from one resident, but we did. Public Works went down to Mystic on Pearl and gravel and marked off, people are having an issue of people parking right in front of their driveways. So we lined that so people know not to go beyond those lines, as well as repainting some lines to make it clear where there's some no parking areas. So we've had some positive feedback on that. That's all I have.
We did get positive feedback, that's nice. All right, we are on to department heads, superintendent of schools and board of education. Councilor Boardman, do you have a question for Superintendent Austin or Mr. Burt?
Mr. Burt, thank you. I know we are still in the beginning phases of the whole parking study. And I was down in Mystic on Pearl Street this weekend and saw the great work with the lines being put in. Some of the concerns down there, and I encourage people to email, was possibly, you know, is there a way to make that one way? And has that been brought up in the parking study? I didn't have it in front of me and I haven't cross-referenced it yet, but I told them to email, is there a way to make people loop around? Because with parking on both sides, it's very hard on Pearl Street to get two lanes through there.
Right. Well, everything's being looked at, there's no set plans yet. And we can't do one street without doing a, you know, without a thorough plan because we get requests regularly, regularly for all the roads. Some people want two-hour parking only, some people want no parking, some want parking on one side of the street, some want one-way. Typically, you're going to get more pushback on a one-way. I mean, we're certainly entertaining it. What you might want to do in some areas is one-sided parking, but it's all being looked at. But nothing to really communicate on it at this point, still pretty early on.
Perfect, thank you.
We're going to have to have a lot of dialogue with the residents and with the council.
That would be very important to have, to start having those meetings. Thank you.
Right, Superintendent Austin, thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Oh, I'm happy to. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to let you know that I'm going to present to you the ARP-ESR plan and give you some information. But before I do, I just want to say that we've had a very busy summer, as usual. It's our Groton Twenty Twenty Plan continues. And we are readying our two new Thames River Magnet and Mystic River Magnet to open for over four hundred students each and maybe nearly five hundred. So we're really excited about that, we ran a lottery. And we really tried to reinsure and get the information out to families in multiple ways. The principals did a really good job too, explaining, and we've really updated the website to really let people know that students, the real goal here was for students to be able to go with their peer groups to their new school. When we were, you know, looking at enlarging, you know, we went from actually nine elementary schools when I first got here. And we've closed, we'll be closing four. And, you know, that brings us down to five. So certainly the neighborhoods had to grow exponentially because we have the schools, you know, in different parts of town. But because of the lottery, our hope was that families would be able to, you know, enroll in the lottery and have some choice. And they did, they came out in droves. We do have some families on waiting lists. There weren't as many seats at Northeast Academy and Catherine Polniewski. But there were, there were quite a few seats for Thames River and Mystic. We got to a point and we checked enrollment and moved power school over. And now there'll be some opening of more seats of people who are on waitlist. And included in the waitlist, we keep several seats for people who are moving into town, military folks and that kind of thing, so they're within that waitlist. So we're going to be, you know, we continue to enroll students and register students. We have an online process now. So really excited about the opening of the two schools and kind of getting everything ready to go. The summer has been filled with learning, learning for grownups and learning for students. We had three different camps that we did this year. We did a STEM camp with about three hundred and fifty students across the district. We did a literacy camp with reading and writing, using some of Teachers College Summer School materials. And then we also did a math camp with my professor, Dr. Kathy Fosno, who's over in New London, and embedded coaching for teachers. And we extended their day so that they were able to really learn some new ideas and to really try some, some new contexts, contextual problem solving in mathematics, which is so important that kids really understand relevance in mathematics and how they can use their math. So very exciting. And then we had a STEAM camp at the middle school, at Groton Middle School, because it is a STEAM magnet school, as you know. So a lot of turnout with that. In addition, we have tutoring happening. And across the district, we really wanted to filtrate all these opportunities for our students. And they, they have come back in person, so many of them. We are wearing masks still in the summer camp, but it doesn't seem to bother them. And when they get out for recess, they're able to, and breaks, they're able to take their masks off. And then Ernie Koschmider, again, has had his grab-and-go meals everywhere. So not only at the three sites that he typically has, but also at all the rec camps, at all of our summer schools and summer camps. He's really done a great job to get the food out to where our kids are and their families. So, you know, that is a big shout-out to him. So I'd like to be able to share my screen and take you through a few slides. Part of the reasons we were able to really do so much more with summer learning is because of these federal funds. So I wanted to orient you to that, if I can share my screen.
You should be able to at the bottom, yep, there you go. Great, thank you.
So let me just try to make it larger here. So ARP-ESR stands for the American Rescue Plan for Elementary-Secondary Schools Emergency Relief. And we've done the planning for twenty-twenty-one. And we had a whole committee, it was really important to the state of Connecticut in all the volumes of documents that I've read and all of the meetings that I've attended with other superintendents around the state, that we really get community input and we get information out to the community and we receive back information. So it was important to me, not all districts did it this way, but I wanted to have a committee that included educators, parents, community members, board members, you know, across the district, all ages, to be able to actually work and plan this with me. I didn't want to do it by myself, I really wanted a team committed to this. So with the ARP-ESR planning, we had this advisory group with a CAPS facilitator. CAPS is the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents. So Dr. Betty Feizer assisted, and she has, you know, a lot of knowledge about what the parameters of this grant and these monies and how they're to be spent. So she was so helpful to our team. I also wanted to kind of share the history of the ESRs, I call them the three ESRs, and share with you how the buckets and priorities are really essentially the same across all three and how they've been spent. To us, sustainability is the most important thing. We don't want to have a cliff to hang off of at the end of this, at twenty-twenty-four. So building capacity and taking care of projects and really partnering with the town. I know we're going to be meeting later on this week. So I'm looking forward to meeting with you, Mayor, and John Burt, and Kim, to really talk about our partnering around some of these goals. And I'll share with you some of the ideas that we have had. There are certain priorities and purposes that I will share. We also had to put out a safe school plan, and it's on the website. And there's also a dropdown for parents to be able to respond. So to get any input that we have, there's SMART goals and action plans that we'll be responsible for. And then we also will have, I'll have to submit this to the state by August sixteenth. So I have a deadline. Keeps me busy. So, you know, I'm going to share with you what these priorities are. We need communication and community feedback. And so even once the plan is published to the state, there are ways that we can make modification as we go through the years. There might be some things that I'm thinking are essential right now. But hopefully, you know, with things as they change and improve, we might be able to shift some of the funding into other areas, and that is very doable. We can get permission from the state to do that. So here are some of the funding that we have received during the COVID-nineteen time period when we closed down in the middle of March twenty-twenty. So we received a Connecticut relief funds at the tune of one-point-three million. ESR one, CARES Act one, came in, the first one came in at six-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand dollars. That really lasted until twenty-twenty-two. Then came in CARES Act three at three million, and that goes out to twenty-twenty-three. And this final ARP-ESR three comes in at six-point-eight million and goes all the way out to FY twenty-four. So really, these federal funds are securing us through this time period, which is really essential. In the very beginning, we had to, you know, we had a lot of people who couldn't come in and teach because of medical reasons, or they would teach from home and we needed a substitute in the classroom. So there was a need for a lot of extra subs and paraprofessionals, especially once we went hybrid, and tutors to really help our students, either they're at home, learning remotely, or in school for two days during the hybrid time and the two days at home. And I did get a lot of good feedback about the tutoring from my reading interventionist, my mass specialist, saying that was worth its weight in gold, having one-to-one time or small group with children and having that quality time, even half an hour, forty-five minutes a day, to really get them to move along, really accelerate their learning. So we took that model that was happening during the school year and we applied it this summer. So that I really feel good about gathering that data so that we don't have to spend the first part of the year gathering that. We really looked at the students who needed, who were part of our intervention process, and we reached out, and so many of them answered the call. And we offered it both virtually, you know, remotely or in person. And we connected it to the Mary Morrison site where the rec camps are, and also to the Claude Chester site, and really all the schools. So, you know, we talk about, you know, at first, I think you heard my motto was start slow and grow. Then it was, you know, we moved from there to progress over perfection. We really wanted to make progress. And now where our theme is back to better than normal. You know, we really want to take those silver linings, the things that we've learned about through blended learning and the use of instructional technology and some of the best practices. Less screen time, of course, more in-person. The state, in its infinite wisdom, as we educators, we know that in-person learning is the best way to learn. And, but there are some things that we learned along the way that I think we want to really make sure that we include. And the whole social, emotional learning and diversity, equity, inclusion is a huge part of this grant. We want to make sure that any students that had been underrepresented, that have had some significant needs, are those that we're really outreach-ing. We certainly want to do the accelerated learning for all of our kids and, you know, ensure that they move forward. But we really want to take special care. And so a lot of these funds will help support our EL students, special ed students, you know, students who've been in intervention and have needed some extra support, so. So here are our buckets. So the state has named this document, Reimagining Schools to Transform Students Lives. And the different buckets start with learning acceleration. I love this term, academic renewal, and student enrichment. And Groton has, from the time, you know, I came with Dr. Grenier, has really made sure that we tried to provide, even in the operating budget, after-school, before-school enrichment opportunities. Very STEAM-like, they, you know, were involved with STEM, arts, and physical fitness, but elementary, middle school, and even high school with all the clubs. So that's why we really thought to engage our kids this summer. I didn't want just plain old summer school, I wanted it better than ever. I wanted it that kids would be engaged and excited. And I had teachers say to me, this was just the way we needed to end the year. It was such a blessing to be able to, you know, work with kids and, and see their enthusiasm. So we felt like we got them on a good pathway. Family and community connections is really important. So, you know, these issues, we found that it was so important this year more than ever that we worked together. If our parents did a remarkable job, our students did a remarkable job, our teachers persevered through it all and kept reaching out. And it's that collaboration that I think is so important. And it's the best thing that a student can have is the allies at home, the allies at school, and everybody kind of, you know, rooting for the student, you know, being on that student's team to help them out. So as I said, the social, emotional, and mental health is very important. And I think you, I've been telling you that we've made sure that we have a social worker, you know, social work support for every building. So there's no building that doesn't have a social worker. The military also has provided military family liaisons. And, you know, at no cost, they're through the Department of Defense. So our military schools have had that support in addition to this. The technology, staff development, avoiding the digital divide, I think because we've used our supplemental Department of Defense funds from seven years ago to do the one-on-one with our students, providing one-on-one technology, working on our infrastructure, we've really kept up with it. So when we had to go down, you know, when we had to go to full remote, we were really pretty ready. I would have liked one more day so I could have gotten in their hands with their workbooks and their books, you know, the day before. But the principals and the staff came to the rescue, and we had families come out on weekends. And we got them what they needed, and that will continue because of those Department of Defense funds and because of these additional funds too. And then the professional learning, you know, everything from professional learning around social, emotional learning, around accelerated learning, around, you know, reading and writing across the disciplines, is really another theme that we really want to do a deeper dive. So we've had a lot of wonderful initiatives, we're not really coming up with a lot more initiatives. We want to make our own initiatives more robust and lean into the good work we've been doing. And so I think that's going to also prevent us from a cliffhanger, so. And then the staff that we have on board, we have some teacher leaders, coordinators and specialists who really are amazing. And they, we do a lot of the train-the-trainer, where they get training and then they come back and train the staff. So that's what I mean by capacity building. So when the funds go away, we can continue the good work, and we have others that can continue the training. And then, of course, the building safe and healthy schools. It was so important that we had the extra custodians, they did the touch, you know, cleaning for both central office and all the schools. It really did help us, I feel like the washing of the hands and that good hygiene that we've taught kids is worth its weight in gold. Using cups at the water fountain or putting, filling water bottles instead of putting mouths on the water fountain, I always felt as an elementary principal, that was pretty essential during flu season. So all of those things, we actually published the document on our safe return. It was really pretty vague, I took a model from the state and said, you know, if at all possible, we won't be wearing masks, but it's looking like we probably will have to be wearing masks like we were this summer. And we continue, I know that Counselor Heath had reached out to me, and we've got about a vaccination clinic. And we do have one that we're planning with Hartford Healthcare, happening at Fitch or Groton Middle School, September ninth. And so that I'll be able to really encourage families and students who are able to get their vaccination, to get it- students who are able to get their vaccination, to get it. We also, I think you might remain, remember, Mayor, that we had Grosso Tech students come up and we offered it to other schools too in the area. So I'll keep everyone posted. We were really hoping to kind of align it with the grab-and-go meals. So I still want to reach out to Ledge Light and also Yale. The thing about the vaccinations is that really it's the Pfizer vaccine that is, you know, the best, or is the one that students can have. So if we set up a vaccination clinic, I really would like to have the Pfizer vaccine so that both students and their family members could, you know, have that. So there's some more information. I'd be happy to send you the slideshow so you can look at it. It's also going to be up on the website. And then if you look at the three ESERS, I don't know if you can see this. Let me see if I can make it a little bigger. So these are the buckets I talked about, the learning, the families, the social emotional. And in the first ESER, we, it really required us to have first and second, required us to have a lot of teachers and substitutes available, especially when people were home or being quarantined. The tutors, those include some additional EL tutors. They also include tutors in math and literacy in all of our schools. And then after-school tutoring, summer tutoring. We have not filled in all the buckets. We've talked to the board, finance and facilities. So we're still working on that with the Board of Ed. And we just took the total amount of the 6.8 million and divided it equally into the buckets, but I don't think that it'll necessarily be equal. I know that it has to be at least the 20% for the learning. But it might be more for the learning and less for another area. So another thing was food services. There was a piece of equipment that we had to, to fix, and we had to help support the food services to have, you know, people who were working during that whole pandemic, you know, make sure that those extra fees were covered. Our community coordinators in every school, they're usually parents or community members in that area. And to have them, you know, at welcoming families and answering questions, supporting the administration and the office has been very helpful. So we've added some time for them. The social worker, remote learning software that was absolutely necessary. And then I, I had talked about professional learning. One of the things, so when you look at building safe and healthy schools, we do need some HVAC systems, and those are, those are allowed and permissible in this budget. So instead of bringing you a CIP, we are able to take care of the HVAC system at Charles Barnum and at the vintage side of Fitch. The other schools are really relatively new, so they're in good shape. And we've really resolved the issue that was at Northeast Academy. So we'll keep you posted on that. But there are, you know, abilities to take care of larger projects like this that also are sustainable, that we can take care of some things that, and maybe not have to bring them to your attention and take care of them through this grant. So I will stop sharing and then answer any questions you might have.
Well, thank you so much for that. That was a lot of information, a lot of good information. I'm sure the people at home liked hearing about it too. I, I think it would be great if you could share it with the, with the whole council and it will become part of our minutes. That way everybody can see it. But that is good news on the HVAC for Barnum and the vintage. I like how you said vintage. The vintage part of Fitch. So that is very good news. Do councillors have questions for Superintendent Austin? Councillor Ogbre, you have the floor.
First, I'd like to say that was an excellent report. Usually I drift off. You kept my attention through the whole thing.
You had to like the picture of the kids though, right?
Love it. Love it. But your enthusiasm is contagious and I thank you for that. It's really great. I have just kind of a, a, a small question. On a different subject, I was kind of surprised that we were having to do a floor in the new school. Am I correct with that?
There was an issue with the new school, the tiles had popped off, so they're looking at the, the makeup of the tile and they're trying to get that corrected before, you know, before they turn it over to us. And then we have problems. So they're really under the obligation of making sure the floors work. I don't know if you remember at Grotton Middle School, but we had a similar problem in the gym. And they had to redo the whole gym floor, but it's beautiful now. So I'd rather have these problems happen on their watch than mine.
Yeah.
And then we have to take care of.
No, I think that's great. And again, your presentation was excellent. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Superintendent Austin. I appreciate you coming out and.
Sorry about that. My hand button's not raising. I apologize for interrupting. I can't.
You have a question for the superintendent?
Yes, I did. Sorry about that.
That's all right. You have the floor.
Hey, thank you. The presentation was very thorough. I appreciate all your efforts to, you know, figure out plans and work to move forward, to head back to school in the upcoming school year. One of the concerns I'm seeing currently and an issue that's on hand unrelated to the presentation, but a concern is children being mixed on, high schoolers being mixed in with younger children on the school bus. And I wasn't sure if you could speak to that because that seems to be a very hot issue in the town. And I've been approached several times regarding it already. And I, I understand some of the concerns. Some people don't want their, you know, 10-year-olds with 18-year-olds. There are 18-year-olds on those school buses. And I understand that there, from the meeting I attended, there was a talk that it would also be a cost savings for the fact that some of the buses were, buses were half-empty. And so this would allow to make the routes more fill up a bus when you go to an area that would be more cost-effective. So I can appreciate that. But I wonder if you could speak to it because people are concerned about mixing and worrying about bullying and those types of things that could start to happen that aren't usually issues on one level. But when you mix larger populations that are at different stages of maturity and development, even if there's not bullying, just what they're hearing an 18-year-old girl or boy speak about that maybe your 10-year-old wouldn't be privy to in a normal circumstance. You can't really stop those discussions on a school bus, things about dating and other things that would be seen very inappropriate for, for, for younger children. And so I just feel compelled to speak up about that. And I think some parents are feeling that there should be some communication and some, maybe some forums and breakout sessions about what, what this will look like, maybe possibly some extra aids on these buses. But I didn't know if.
Have one minute?
Thank you.
I'd be happy to respond to that. One of the things I'm really excited about is that we were able to do a Transfinders, the, the software we use. We were able to have a utilization report done for very little money, which really gave me the information I knew would be true is even before COVID, we were running at 20 to 40% capacity. And I had heard from many parents that these buses have been kind of half-empty. So we really wanted to find out, you know, if we ran them two to a seat, which is more like 66% capacity, what would that look like? We also heard from parents whose children were at Northeast Academy and they're coming from the other side of town, and it sometimes was a 70-minute ride. You know, how could we do that more efficiently? And really pick up students from one neighborhood, get them to school, you know, and even if it's across town, be able to not have a lot of stops along the way. So it was really important that we had a full hour in between our middle school and elementary school to be able to move kids, you know, to their new magnet schools. This is the first time we've done five-school magnets and, and, you know, making sure we transport them in an efficient time. And in doing the report, we looked like, it looked more like 20 minutes on some buses and 45 on the other. So really less than that hour timeframe. So we were really happy about that. We also, if you remember Mike Grineer talking about the 2020 vision, this community bought into the idea of having an international baccalaureate campus. With that comes so much opportunity and access to rigorous, relevant education. And we really, there are some efficiencies when you bring kids in at the same time and they have a similar schedule. In sharing teachers, we actually have a teacher that works one of the A day at one school and a B day at the other. So instead of having to hire two separate teachers, we can share the work between the two. And there's a lot of other wonderful opportunities for kids, whether it's being able to utilize a course at the high school for, you know, an advanced middle schooler, or, you know, there's a lot of sharing opportunities that we're looking forward to exploring. So when we did the work, when they did the utilization report, and we also know that high school adolescent kids could use a little extra snooze button, you know, that morning, getting there at 7 o'clock, which they used to do at Fitch, and then the bell started at 7:25. Now they'll be coming into school like 7:30 and the bell is 7:40. So that they'll really have an extra timeframe. It's only a 15-minute difference for them, and it's not going to interrupt the afternoon. And then the middle school, same thing, there are 10-minute difference. And the elementaries are about five. So it's not a lot of difference in the time. And we did some research around it, and there's many other districts that have done this. I had personal experience in my district when I was the principal of middle school and high school students coming in together. And it actually was very beneficial. It's, usually the high school kids were either sleeping or they had their headphones on in the back. But boy, they were, were almost like built-in bus patrols because if someone was acting out up front. So we plan on putting the younger kids, just like elementary, we have a K-5 spread, pre-K-5 spread in some cases. So we would put the younger children up in the front, the middle schoolers in the front, and the high school in the back. We'll be dropping them, the high school off first and then going right over through the Fitch parking lot to the middle school. So we have a, a whole presentation, Portia, on the website, and we actually have a form that families can fill out. I haven't gotten any responses. So if you hear people say they have questions, we have frequently asked questions on the website for back to school and this new plan. And I really would encourage them to ask their questions. There is going to be professional learning that's going on for the bus drivers and handing, handling multi-age group students. And then those concerns, work with the administrators to really make sure they're very responsive to any concerns and bus, you know, reports that come out. We have, we also have cameras on the bus and we're purchasing this app for a very little bit of money where parents can actually see where the bus is so that they know if the bus is running late. I think this is going to be a really wonderful thing for parents so that they can kind of schedule and know if the child is running behind, you know. We certainly will also message them. But I think there are some things that we put into place that are going to be very effective. And there are some aids on some buses. We don't have them all. And if that, if that was something that we did need on buses, if there were some concerns, you know, we certainly would look into that. I just have to say that when you talk about, you know, that 12th grader with that sixth grader, they could be brother, sister, neighbors, friends, you know, but they're going to be sitting, you know, in the front of the bus and the back of the bus. So we, I actually experienced it myself, that behavior improved with the multi-age. And Ted Kelleher also had that in his district and his children have that in their district. And so does Peter Bass. So the principals of these schools, I think, are really prepared and will be monitoring the situation. And I, I appreciate, safety is a number one concern. And I appreciate that. So we have a whole page in the slideshow just about the safety. And we're trying to be very proactive.
Thank you for your comments. And my, my last one is, I know moving forward, only certain schools were getting free, free lunch that were designated Title I. And then everybody was getting it because of the COVID funding. And I know that we're able to get that under another year based on the funding. And I'm just hoping that we're looking at ways within our, our school district as we see that we have food insecurities and the importance to make sure every child has access to a healthy meal, which our school has done so wonderfully achieving. But looking at a pandemic, how it could strike a family, you know, look at the casino workers who all lost jobs and so forth and so on. And I'm hoping that we're looking at ways to develop and secure funding to move the free lunch beyond the year that we currently have to make that a plan that all kids in Grotton will be have free lunch at our schools.
Our Board of Ed couldn't agree with you more.
Perfect.
They, they really, and, and Ernie had done some legwork in that to really know how to approach the system using our numbers for free and reduced lunch. So we, we hope to continue.
Perfect. I, I think that's great. Great effort. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Councillor Parker, you have the floor?
Thank you. Mrs. Austin, a quick question about the seating on the bus. You said two per seat. But if COVID ramps up, how are you going to handle that if you're cutting down on the buses?
Well, I didn't say we were cutting down on the buses. We do have an extra group of four buses that we will be utilizing when we see the need for reducing like that trip from one side of town to the other. We might make those groupings smaller, so we'll be utilizing them in that way and utilizing them, just like you said, if there was a concern with too many kids on a bus. So the utilization report is showing though from, you know, 30% to 66%. So that really is one to two students in a seat. And they will be wearing masks because it is indoors, you know. So we really, you know, will do all those mitigating situations that we, you know, have been doing in the past going into the future, at least at the beginning of the year, I believe. And. I'm waiting for the governor to, you know, make the proclamation, but I don't know if he's going to.
Oh, I forgot my question. I went to ask it. Okay, that's okay. I'll email you later. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much. And we will see you at our next meeting.
All right.
We are going to take a five-minute break because it's 8:22 before we start actual motions and moving our resolutions along. So five minutes, everybody, if you could be back at 27, ready to go. Thank you very much. Moving our resolutions along. So five minutes, everybody, if you could be back at twenty-seven, ready to go. Thank you very much. It is eight twenty-nine and we are back from recess. And we are on to committee reports from numeral nine, committee of the whole. I don't have anything. Chairman Melendez, do you have anything for personnel and appointments, sir?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, personnel appointments met on July twentieth virtually. Um, we reappointed Susan Sutherland to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And we reappointed John Worsbicky to the Water Pollution Control Authority. As well as we made a recommendation for the uh boards. Commission uh member recognition, which um I have to send to you. And um. I just want to point out that we are looking for volunteers on on a new tax abate study committee. So if anybody, if that sounds like something anybody is interested in, they should um. Apply, uh get in contact with the town clerk and and apply that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Melendez. Um, Counselor He, did you have something on um personnel appointments?
I did. I just wanted to take the opportunity to remind people that we have about twenty vacancies on boards and commissions. Uh, so there is something uh that I'm sure anybody who wants to get involved may find, there's something you'll find interesting. And you don't need to be a member of a political party. It could be any party. We're just looking for good people to uh volunteer a few hours every month uh to help the town.
Thank you. Well said. Um, rules, Chairman Overy.
No meeting, no report.
Thank you. Um, and public safety, Chairman Baumgartner?
Uh, no report.
Um, Madam Clerk, did you have a comment? Madam Clerk?
Yes, I'm just trying to unmute. I'm not on my regular computer. I'm on a small Kindle. Um, let me try to ru- lower my hand, haha. Uh, but what I was going to say is um Chairman um Melendez had mentioned the tax abatement. Um, uh, committee and we have had several, I believe we're up to eight applications that have been forwarded to to you, so you you should be in receipt of those.
Excellent, great. Eight of them, that's wonderful.
I believe that we're up to eight. I could be wrong.
We need five, so that's good.
No, you gotta pick the best.
Yes, exactly. Thank you. That's good news. All right, so we are on to new business. And this is um Roman numeral ten, ten A, twenty twenty-one, five, five, eight. And this is the Town Manager Performance Review. This was on page nineteen in your packet. And I believe this is Counselor Parker, please.
Resolution to approve an updated town manager's contract. Whereas the town council recently conducted a. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. The co- town council recently conducted a performance evaluation for the town manager resulting in a positive outcome. And whereas the town council desires to make changes to the town manager's contract. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor is authorized to sign an updated contract. With the town manager was an effective date of August third, two thousand twenty-one to include an addition of one year to the term of the contract. I so moved.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Overy, I believe.
Yeah.
Right, very good. And then is there discussion? Counselor Borland?
You, um, is there anything else to that contract as far as other time that was going to be added or anything else as far as?
Nope, just just the one year.
So no vacation time or anything else, just straight one year?
Yep.
I'm tracking, give me a minute. Is that Counselor Borland, do you yield the floor?
I'm sorry.
Counselor Borland, do you yield the floor?
Yes, I'm all set. Thank you.
Yeah. Counselors of Perry, you have the floor, sir.
I think that the first whereas. The uh town council recently conducted a performance evaluation for the town manager resulting in a positive outcome. I think that's grossly understated. I think that the vast majority of the counselors that were involved in that uh evaluation found that uh. Uh, the town manager. Uh, Mr. Burt exceeded expectations in almost every category. He has been an extraordinarily good uh town manager. Uh, we are very, very lucky to have him in Groton. And uh, I I I just would like to share with the the public. The praise that most of us feel for him. Thank you.
Great. I see no other hands, so we will vote on twenty twenty-one, five, five, eight, Town Manager Performance Review. Um, I believe we, let me just do a quick count, two, four, six, seven, eight, nine. We are at nine. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Borland abstained.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, Borland. Thank you. So we are now on to. Twenty twenty-one, four, three, eight, one, Police Union Collective Bargaining Agreement, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three. This was on page twenty in your packet and I believe this will be. Counselor Cranca.
Make a resolution approving the tentative agreement reached between the town and local three, four, two, eight, council number four, AFS, CME. AFL-CIO, Groton Town Police Union for the term July first, twenty twenty to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Whereas the town of Groton and local three, four, two, eight, council number four, AFS, CME. AFL-CIO, Groton Town Police Union reached a tentative agreement on a successor. Collective bargaining agreement for the period July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, whereas the bargaining unit membership. Voted to approve the agreement and whereas the approval is recommended by the towns negotiators, therefore be resolved. The Groton Town Council hereby approves the agreement and the expenditure of funds necessary to implement the agreement between the town and the local. Three, four, two, eight, council number four, AFS, CME. AFL-CIO. Groton Town Police Union on a successor collective bargaining agreement for the period July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. I so move.
Second, He.
Moved by Cranco. And seconded by Heed. Okay, seeing no discussion, we will vote on twenty twenty-one, four, three, eight, Police Union Collective Bargaining Agreement. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you for joining us, Chief. Let's shoot down there.
All right, thank you. Good night.
Good night.
And and I just want to report, we had a great national night out.
Oh, thank you. I'm so glad uh that it worked out well for you. I apologize, we couldn't be there. Many of us were in another meeting, so thank you very much. All right, we are on to.
Good night.
Good night. Twenty twenty-one, four, three, nine, one, United Steelworkers Collective Bargaining Agreement, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two. And this is on page twenty-one in your packet. And this is Counselor Heed.
All right, I will make a resolution requesting the approval to approve the successor collective bargaining agreement between the town of Groton and United Steelworkers of America, AFL-CIO, Local Union nine, four, one, one. Whereas the town of Groton and the United Steelworkers of America, AFL-CIO, Local Union nine, four, one, one, were in negotiations. And whereas the town of Groton and the United Steelworkers of America, AFL-CIO, Local Union nine, four, one, one. Reached a tentative agreement on July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. Whereas the agreement reached will be in place from July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And whereas approval was recommended by the town staff. Therefore be it resolved, the Groton Town Council hereby approves the successor collective bargaining agreement between the town of Groton. And the United Steelworkers of of America, AFL-CIO, Local Union nine, four, one, one, I so move. Second.
The period.
Moved by Heed and seconded by Siperry. We've seen no discussion. We will vote on twenty twenty-one, four, thirty-nine, United Steelworkers Collective Bargaining Agreement. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with nine counselors. Thank you. And we are on to twenty twenty-one, five, five, one, Acceptance of Open Space Parcel Maple Glen Subdivision. This is on page twenty-two in your packets and Counselor Overy, I believe.
Okay, I'll move a resolution to accept twenty point five acres of land at the Maple Glen subdivision. Pleasant Valley Road North, Gunji Wamp Road and Briar Hill Road for park, open space and recreational purposes. Whereas the Maple Glen subdivision was approved by the Planning Commission on August eighth, two thousand six. And whereas the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended acceptance of the open space at its June twenty-second, twenty twenty-one meeting. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council hereby accepts twenty point five acres of land at the Maple Glen subdivision. Pleasant Valley Road North, Gunji Wamp Road and Briar Hill Road for park, open space and recreational purposes. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Overy, seconded by Heed. And seeing no discussion, we will vote on twenty twenty-one, five, five, one, Acceptance of Open Space. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you.
Madam uh Madam Mayor, is this item, is this item referred to the RTM or no?
Uh, these ones, I don't believe have ever been referred to the RTM. Deb uh Deb Jones is online, though. Correct me if I'm wrong.
It's just a matter of price, you know, the value of the property. If any property is valued over ten thousand dollars, it has to be approved. Uh, except in store selling.
Um, that that's correct unless it is part of a subdivision. That's right.
Right.
So I don't believe it goes to the RTM.
This is part of the subdivision.
That's right.
Correct. Thank you. Then just kind of make that clear.
Clear on. I'm sorry.
I have one question, if I might.
We've already voted, but go ahead.
I know, it's it's off the thing. I was just wondering if Rachel's walked the property yet. Looking for a ball field.
We are on to twenty twenty-one, five, two, three, DCF Youth Services Grant. Uh, Counselor Borland? Counselor Borland?
Yeah, I'm just looking. I'm gonna pass.
Counselor Melendez, are you available to take this item, please?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
I recommend a resolution authorizing the town manager or his designee to apply to the State of Connecticut Department of Children and Families. For FYE twenty twenty-two Youth Services Funding. Whereas crisis intervention, prevention and support programs and short-term counseling services will benefit as at-risk. Groton youth and whereas funding is available from the State of Connecticut Department of Children and Families. To supplant a portion of the salaries of Groton Human Services youth counselors. Provide intervention and prevention services for at-risk Groton youth. Therefore be it resolved that the town manager, John Burt or his designee, is authorized to file an application with the State of. Connecticut Department of Children and Families, DCF, for FYE twenty-two Municipal Youth Services Funding. In an amount to be determined by DCF. And to amend contractual agreements for such funding to ensure continuation of short-term counseling, crisis intervention. And prevention and support for. Programs for Groton youth, so moved.
Second, Parker.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Parker. Seeing no discussion, we will vote on twenty twenty-one, five, two, three, DCF Youth Services Grant. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. We are on to twenty twenty-one, five, three, nine, DCF Youth Services Bureau Enhancement Grant. This is page twenty-four. Counselors of Perry, please.
Resolution authorizing the town manager or his designee. To apply to the State of Connecticut Department of Children and Families for physical year ending uh. Uh, twenty-two Youth Services Bureau Enhancement. Uh, Grant Program Funding. Whereas the State of Connecticut Department of Children and Families offers Youth Services Bureau Enhancement Grant Programs. funding to municipally-based Connecticut Youth Services Programs for supplies and related expenses connected with the programs and activities which benefit Groton youth and families in areas such as youth enrichment, outreach programs, general support, and positive youth development. And whereas Groton Humans Services has demonstrated its success in providing youth programs and services, therefore be it resolved that the town manager, John Burt, or his designee is authorized to apply for and contract with the State of Connecticut of Children and Families, DCF, for physical year 22 Youth Services Bureau Enhancement Grant Program Funding in the amount to be determined by DCF. I so move.
Second, Parker.
Moved by Zeperry and seconded by Parker. Seeing no discussion, we will vote on 2021 539 DCF Youth Services Bureau Enhancement Grant. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. We are on to 2018 424 Sister Cities. This is page 25, and I believe we are back to Counselor Baumgartner.
Resolution to approve the twinning agreement between the town of Groton, City of Groton, City of New London, and the City of Kingston, Jamaica. Whereas the town council recognizes the advantages of creating a relationship with Kingston, Jamaica. And whereas the City of New London and the City of Groton have also expressed interest in becoming sister cities with Kingston, Jamaica, and have expressed interest in partnering with the town of Groton. For such endeavor now, therefore be it resolved that the town council approves the memorandum of understanding for the establishment of a sister city twinning relationship between the town of Groton, City of Groton, and City of New London, Connecticut, with the City of Kingston, Jamaica. So moved.
Second, Heed.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Heed. Counselor Bordelon, do you have a comment on the sister cities agreement?
Yes, I just wanted to state again, as we said before, it was such an honor to attend and it's, it's really important to make these connections and develop our town in a way that extends the hand across, you know, different boundaries and enrichments and allows for us to collaborate and look at ways that we can grow help other, you know, folks, you know, learn and we learn from them. So I'm really excited for this one. I think this is really important and I look forward to see what this can do for our youth. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, who made the second on that motion? I know Baumgartner made the motion.
Baumgartner and seconded by Heed.
Thank you. That's what I wrote, but didn't trust myself.
Correct. All right. Counselor Baumgartner, do you have a comment?
Yes, also like to line my remarks with Counselor Bordelons. Would also like to take the moment to recognize two very important holidays for Jamaica. On August 1st, they celebrate Emancipation Day, as do many other nations in the Caribbean. You know, obviously, Emancipation, Emancipation Day representing the day the, the, you know, they observe independence. And then on, I believe, August 6th is their Independence Day as well. And so just want to wish a happy Independence Day to our new sister city as well. Thank you.
Very good. That's what I was going to say as soon as we moved it. Excellent. Good segue. All those in favor of 2018 424 Sister Cities, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. And happy Independence Day to the people of Jamaica. And we are on to 2021 39620 Riverview Avenue. This is page 26, and I think we are back to Counselor Parker, please.
Resolution to authorize efforts to preserve coastal access rights. Whereas Zero Riverview Avenue Property ID 260708997450 has historically been used by the town of Groton as public parking. And whereas ownership of a portion of the property has been brought into question. And whereas the town council places great value on retention of its coastal access, now therefore be it resolved that the town council authorized by town attorney, town manager, and director of public works to preserve the town's right in the disputed area of Riverview Avenue, including the right to pursue illegal remedy. I so move.
Okay, need.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Heed. Counselor Bordelon, you have the floor.
Thank you. As it was stated tonight in public comment, it is important to make sure we're protecting our coastal access. Know that we've been, we had come before us on other parts of coastal access and the in-depth discussions and studies and looking at ways through the shipyard and areas in which were controversial at times, but the important is that we do do our due diligence. And as a, you know, longtime resident of the area, even though I did not live in knowing, I spent many summers down there myself with friends, and that area, as it was discussed tonight, was always open, was always welcoming and available to the community to use and access. And so to lose this area would be a loss to the community. And, you know, for myself, I can say for the last, you know, 30 years that I remember it being open and accessible. So I think that's an important fact, and I appreciate the folks who spoke for making sure and wanting to preserve that. I think it's important for our town to do such. Thank you.
Counselors of Perry, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm opposed to this motion. This property is privately owned. The town has just used it for a parking area in an area where there is no need for public parking. It's fairly suburban with no commercial involvement there. The rightful owner has simply reasserted his right to control the property exclusively. Now, the only basis for a claim on the property would be continued use or adverse possession. That is generally frowned on by the courts. I think it's only a few feet of riverfront.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Who's your point of order, Counselor Bordelon?
I'm just concerned that some of the comments might be germane to executive session, perhaps. I'm not sure, but it's getting close.
I, I am saying that this property is privately held.
Perry? Give me one minute, please. Mr. Burt, is Attorney Duggan still with us?
He is not, and she hasn't been the attorney on this issue.
Okay. What are, what are your thoughts on the point of order?
Well, one thing is, we don't, well, I just want to say, we don't recognize that it's who, we're still reviewing who the owner is of the property, because it's actually in our name right now in the system. So it does get into a legal area that we probably don't want to go into. That's what I thought.
Second point, second point to make in this is that I just wanted to make the point that as far as coastal access is concerned, it doesn't afford very much at all of coastal access. Nor is it in a location where people would want coastal access. There's nothing there. The second point I would make with this is just last year,
Perry?
We gave away, we gave away a $9,000 piece of property to a private individual
Perry.
Used in his business. Yep. We set a precedent at that time.
Point of order.
Counselors of Perry, there's another point of order. If you'll excuse me for a minute, please. Counselor Franco, what is your point of order?
Point of order, I, I didn't hear a ruling on Counselor Bordelon's original motion there.
Confirmed that it was going into, it's really hard to hear you, I'm sorry. I, I had to read your lips earlier when you were talking. So could you repeat what you said?
Yes, my point of order is Counselor Bordelon had brought a concern to the floor, and it had not been ruled on, and Counselors of Perry continued to speak on it. And I personally agree that this is probably an executive session discussion that and how we would proceed with the term.
So the history, may I respond to the point of order?
Not, not right now, please. Not right now, please. So Mr. Burt addressed the concern of the prior comment that Counselors of Perry made. And I said Counselor, Counselor Bordelon's order was, point of order was taken. Counselors of Perry was starting to go in a different direction now. That's why I didn't stop him. So just be mindful, Counselors of Perry, of the, the concerns of
I am, I am mindful of the concerns. The, the facts that I stated early are a matter of public record. But the, the facts, the other fact is that just last year, we gave $9,000 piece of property for no good reason to an owner of a private business. And we gave it to him because he wanted it. He could have procured it by just having the insurance company pay for it. They had insurance for title insurance for that property. But the council in its largesse decided to give it to him. That's a precedent for abandoning a property right. And we're being selective in that action at this point.
Point of order.
My point is that this is not a good move. It's going to be it's going to be expending public money to make a fight over an issue that has very little value.
We have two points of order called, what is your point of order, Counselor Franco?
Counselors of Perry is talking about topics that are not on the agenda that are a different topic altogether that has already been discussed.
That topic is a precedent for this one.
I will let that stand, Counselor Bordelon. Did you also call a point of order?
Yeah, I think it's pretty covered in hers. Thank you. I mean, in not in Counselor Franco's. Thank you.
And Counselors of Perry, Mr. Burt wanted to respond to you, but you have 48 seconds remaining.
No, that's about all I have to say. There is a precedent. The property isn't worth the money we're going to spend for a legal battle. And there's a very high probability that we'll lose the legal battle.
All right, Mr. Burt, you wanted to make a correction or?
Just, just to mention a couple of things. One, it's not a matter of record, because the records actually currently show the town is owning it. So it's not exactly a matter of record yet. It was $900, not 9,000 for that piece of property we're talking about. It was considered a minimal amount. But we are hoping, we're not, this does not necessarily say we are going to court or anything. It just gives us the option. We're still hoping to negotiate something mutually satisfactory.
Thank you, Mr. Burt. We have several counselors that wish to speak. I have Counselor Heed and then Melendez, and then Bordelon for her second time. Counselor Heed, you?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say, I don't take legal action lightly, but I think this is a very important issue. And I think it's worth fighting for, so I support it 100%.
Counselor Heed, yield the floor, Counselor Heed.
I yield the floor.
Counselor Melendez, you had your hand up earlier. Did you wish the floor?
Uh, no, the town manager said what I wanted to say. Thank you.
And are there any counselors who wish to speak a first time before we go to second time? I would, I would like to speak, please. I just, to confirm what Mr. Burt had said, this is preserving our right to take action if we so choose. And this was done under the guidance of our town attorney. And as the prior counselor stated, we don't take this lightly. We take the prospect of legal action very seriously, and we're weighing it very carefully. And that's all I'll have to say on that. And Counselor Bordelon, this is your second time speaking on the topic. You have the floor.
Thank you. To Counselor Zeperry's statement regarding, you know, kind of that it would be a lot of money, and there wasn't, you know, in his eyes, the potential to see the worth in it. I see this like open space. Once you lose coastal access, public access, it's hard to get that back. And not everyone has the opportunity to live as close to water as some may, and it's important that we preserve that and our rights as town residents to be able to be in that area and park there, because there's very little parking in that area. And, you know, that is a spot that I enjoyed to park and walk down a little bit as like you're heading to Ford's and down the staircase and sit down there and read. And that was a spot that it was okayed for my car to be. So where else would I park now? So the loss of that and the value of that is, is large. And once we lose that for that area and the town at large, it, as I stated, you can sometimes never get that back, and that is a value. Having the right and the accessibility to be close to the ocean and losing that right is a loss to our community. Thank you.
All right, seeing no other discussion, we will vote on 2021 3960 Riverview Avenue. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please raise your hand. Any abstentions? That motion passes eight in favor, one opposed to Perry, zero abstentions. Are you set, Madam Clerk? We're going to take that as a yes? Very good. And that takes us to open agenda item review for August. Does anyone have any comments on the open agenda item review? Counselor Bordelon, you have the floor.
Um, yes, for the town manager, when are you thinking that we could start talking about the agenda item as I discussed earlier? Not, not germane to the particular development, but in, in a development plan in general, not in reference.
I think it should be prepared soon. I would just have to consult with the mayor.
I'm sorry, Mr. Burt. Can you clarify what, what you're speaking of, please?
I believe the, it's the sale of property and review of property sales process. Is that correct?
That's what I'm speaking about.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
And once again, not pertaining to the developer in question where it began, but how do we move forward and look at a plan to vet properly for the next development?
Right.
That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, it was, as I just stated, it should be done, it's just about wrapped up, and then I have to consult with the mayor when to us to put it on.
We have, we have a lot of items on this agenda, on this review. And it's a matter of getting them all in in a timely manner and fitting in the new business that's coming in. So we do our best to, to get them in.
Um, I just wanted to state, if there's a possibility to move that one forward, I think it would be really important for the town, since we have new developers coming in. And I think that one should take precedence so that we make sure that we have all that in and vetted, you know, appropriately. So that should be a priority. Thank you.
Counselor O'Gree? You're muted, Counselor O'Gree.
I am. I just wanted to suggest, I think it would be good if the council could arrange to have a workshop to go through these items to see which ones might be able to be taken care of by the monies that are coming to the town. I know that we're going through some things now. Right now, we're doing nonprofits and et cetera. But there are some items here that definitely could fall into items that are, that are acceptable for the use of the money.
Okay, so then I just want to clarify. So then you're suggesting certain items on the open agenda item list be considered for use of S R, or not S R, the, of the ARP funding?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think we need a workshop to, to talk about, you know, our, our priority on the list.
So will you be coming to the long-term recovery meeting tomorrow night?
Yep. Yep.
So perhaps you can raise that there if we have time. I'm not sure which, I don't have the agenda in front of me to see where that would fit, but that's something we could raise there. But if I don't know how we would handle that as far as a workshop goes, because I'm looking at this, like, do you see something right away?
Well, yeah. Well, I don't even know if it's on here now that you say that, but one of the things, the bridge repair. I'd, I'd like to see us work with Stoneington to do the bridge. the bridge repair, I'd like to see us work with Stonington to do the bridge that we need in Mystic Stonington Line. But I think if we had an opportunity to talk about these things, we could prioritize them, and so that, you know, our monies could be well-spent, but do some long-term improvements for Groton.
Okay, so noted. I would just say, there aren't many items on here that are, how can I say this, that are actually requiring funding? Like, the bridge repair certainly is, but a lot of these things are like the certain policies, or review of a different policy, or let's implement a new one. So they're not dependent on a funding source. So I understand what you're saying about the repair, and Mr. Burt, have you noted that? If we don't remember to raise that tomorrow evening, can you keep that in mind, please?
I will.
Thank you very much.
Would that be an appropriate place, then, to raise the question of water lines and sewer lines?
I think, I'm gonna yield to Mr. Burt on this, but I think he's addressed that before with the amount of money we have.
It wouldn't go, it wouldn't do much in the way of water and sewer lines, and sewers are extremely limited on what we could do because of the state boundaries and where we can go with it.
Well, I'd like to see something that's gonna make it so that this town goes forward in a better way, and I think it deserves discussion. I don't know how the monies fall, because we haven't had an opportunity to really talk about it. So, you know, I've been attending the meetings and listening and trying to learn, but I think there's more that we could be doing with it. It would be good for Groton for long-term effects. We certainly could do some water lines.
Okay. Counselor Heed, you haven't spoken on this yet. Go ahead.
Thanks. You have two questions. Zero, Pecan Grove, what is that again?
That's the lease at the old gas station there, the Nutmeg Farms, I believe.
Oh, oh, okay, right. And then the other one, Thera Mahang Groton Heights Option Agreement, I thought that they canceled last time, that they were coming back in two weeks.
They have, no, so Dave, we just said that we would try to get them back at one of our meetings in this month.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any first-time speakers before I go to second-time speakers? Counselor Bordelon, you have the floor.
Thank you. Is there any more information about the gas station in regards to the stuff that we had talked about?
I've not had an update from Mr. Reiner recently. I don't think he's prepared to bring anything forward yet.
And nothing from about the land either?
Nothing at all.
And then the last thing was, I know we spoke last, and you said something about having a meeting with Stonington regarding parking. Maybe we also should bring them in to talk about the bridge at the same time.
Sure. That's what I would like.
Is there a date for that yet? I know you said you were gonna try to arrange something.
Not yet. Another thing I have to speak with the mayor about.
Okay, so those are other pressing items as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That comes to the end of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded, Heed.
Seconded by Heed. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with nine counselors. It is 9:08 PM, and we are adjourned. Everybody be well, get your vaccination if you can. If not, mask up and stay safe. Have a good night.